Being ordered, I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Our heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer asking for guidance as your service. You have entrusted us as stewards of this community. Please guide our hearts in each decision we make. We give to you our city, our employees, and ourselves. May we be always mindful of their service and trust in you. Let us remember the lives of those lost in nine eleven this month and their families. In all that we do together, may we look to you first for inspiration and strength. We pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
First, I have a special presentation. It's Constitution Week. Do Janice, does somebody want to make some comments before I come out? Step right up here and introduce yourself and we'll listen to what you have to say and then I'll come out there for the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And pull the mic down toward you just a little bit. Thank you.
Do I have to?
No.
Not necessarily.
Okay, I'm honored to be here this evening. I bring you greetings from Yakon River Patriots, Daughters of the American Revolution, Albemarle Chapter. In celebration of our Constitution, the values it represents, we are excited to announce the following activities. A banner will be placed on the corner of First Street and Main Street, proudly showcasing our commitment to the principles of democracy and unity. An exhibit will be on display at the Main Street Library, featuring historical documents, stories, and educational resources about the Constitution. We invite everyone to come and explore this rich tapestry of our country's history. In efforts to educate and inspire our young students about the significance of the Constitution, we will hand out over eight hundred copies of the Constitution to our eighth grade students at our local schools. Lastly, I encourage you to join us on Tuesday, September the seventeenth, at four P M. in front of the City Hall for a special ringing of the bells. This moment will serve as a reminder of the importance of our Constitution and help us to pay tribute to the sacrifices made by our ancestors and our freedom, for our freedom. Thank you all for what you do in helping us promote patriotism and civic education in our community. God, home, and country. Thank you.
I'm gonna come out and anyone you want to come up and stand with us, ask them to come forward. You'll step up and turn around and face the audience. City of Albemarle Proclamation Recognizing Constitution Week 2024. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent, magnificent, magnificent document and its anniversary. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Gerald R. Michael, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Albemarle, to hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-four to be Constitution Week in Albemarle and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you ladies. Next is approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular session.
Please approve.
Motion by Councilor Hall to approve. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing and zoning map amendment twenty-four oh six to request for a zoning map amendment. Council will consider approving a rezoning request to rezone two parcels totaling one point four two acres off of Trust Lane. Tax records three one five three nine and three eight four five zero. We want to change the split zoning of both parcels from R ten general residential and L I D light industrial to entirely L I D light industrial. I'll ask staff to introduce.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Clark, glad you're feeling better. Uh, this is rezoning case ZMA twenty-four dash zero six. The applicant, as well as the owner of both parcels, is Structural Building Components Incorporated, or S B C. The tax record numbers for both parcels are three one five three nine and three eight four five zero. Both parcels are located at three six six eight nine Trust Lane. And the two parcels combined are approximately one point four two acres. Let's take a look at the aerial map. Got a few different colors and lines going on here. The yellow line represents the jurisdictional boundary between the city and the county. The blue lines represent the two parcels that we are considering rezoning for tonight. Um, S B C as a whole also owns these three parcels here representing their manufacturing facilities. Uh, these three parcels are located in the county though and are zoned M one, which is sort of light manufacturing for county zoning. Um, this building here is the applicant's office, which is pretty much the reason for requesting rezoning tonight, as we'll get into. Uh, the thing to note, it's not shown here quite yet, is if you come up this yellow line here and cut off uh, this portion of these two parcels towards Aquadale Road, uh, this is the portion of both parcels that is zoned L I D or light industrial. So the two thirds of the remaining parcels are zoned here, R ten. So the applicant pretty much has three reasons for requesting rezoning tonight. The first and most important is that the business has been growing over the years and the applicant feels it is the prudent time to expand their office, to hold additional employees, some additional equipment. Um, however, the office is located in the R ten zoning district and R ten does not allow office uses. So the office has been operating as a non-conforming use, which is fine unless they want to expand it, which they do. So the applicant has come in and requested we rezone the remaining portion of their parcels, their two parcels to L I D. Uh, the second reason is to provide some uniform zoning. Rather than have the split zoning, let's do away with that. Uh, they would like to do it to rezone both parcels to L I D. And third reason is the city L I D zoning district is most comparable to the county's um, M one zoning district, which the rest of their facilities are in. So it's just a little bit of cleanup work, uh, for the most part here. The applicant's statement for the proposed request is we're an established business operating since twenty-ten. We're in need of expanding our office due to the company's growth. Impact of existing vegetation will be very minimal between our property and the neighboring properties. And what the applicant is referring to in particular here is there are two residential, uh, single-family units here. This is their office again, but all in here is a lot of natural mature vegetation that the applicant would only try to keep as much as possible to provide, you know, a little bit of that buffer. Alright, so we're looking at their facility again here. Have a little bit of a topo map. Most of their facility is located on quite level ground, actually. Uh, their office is over here. It's got a little bit of a slope downward as we head towards the back of the property. But as far as the whole facility, all five parcels, it's a manufacturing operation providing construction components such as roof and floor trusses, Ijoists to builders and contractors. Um, this parcel is three one five three nine with the office and this parcel here is three eight four five zero. And this kind of represents, um, the applicant's ingress and egress, basically Trust Lane, coming and going from the facility. Opposed use is to expand their office building due to growth. Uh, even though these parcels are in the county, uh, there's no plan to expand the manufacturing facilities, at least at this time. Water, sewer, and power are available to the site and the parcels are not located in any kind of regulated floodplain. So here are some, uh, recent photos of their operation. Uh, this is kind of looking north, but this is the office building that they would like to expand and they'd like to expand it on this side over here, which we'll see in a couple of pictures. This is if you're standing on the right side of the office building, looking north. Uh, this is sort of a clear area that the applicant uses for some employee parking. But here's some of that mature kind of existing vegetation that, uh, runs along their property, on the property lines. Here's looking east from the office. These are their manufacturing, two of their manufacturing facilities. Uh, this is looking south from the office. There's additional parking here. This is, I believe, this is a different business here in the background, the one just further south. Uh, this is standing in front of the office, looking west. This is Trust Lane. Ingress and egress for the facility, city water tank here. This is looking directly west from the actual office building. Here's some more of that vegetation, providing a little bit of a buffer from the residences. Here is the area on the left side of the building that the applicant would like to expand. They'd like to come all the way out here as far as they can, of course, meeting setbacks and such. And if they can, if they need to, maybe even create an L shape and go a little bit further this way. Looking at the current zoning, it always shows up a little different on my computer screen. But up here in the yellow, this is all the R ten zoning district. And as you can see clearly here, this is where the split zoning line occurs on the applicant's parcels. So over here in this darker gray is all L I D zoning and this is R ten. Uh, the lighter gray out here is county M one zoning and this is county, uh, I think it's G B, general business zoning here. Also notice if, if, if council does decide to rezone the two parcels, then the zoning will follow the jurisdictional line. Kind of a neat. Uh, here's some adjacent land uses, again, the subject parcels, two residential, single-family homes here. This is actually, to the north here is an unused, um, city right-of-way at the moment. Um, to the east here is the applicant's manufacturing facilities, city water tank. And there's another business down here. I think it's Care, um. Can't remember the name of the business right here. What's another existing sort of manufacturing facility? Okay, so referring to the future land use map classification for the twenty twenty-eight land use plan, our two parcels are located where this blue dot is approximately, and that is in this tan area. And all of that is designated as county primary and secondary growth areas in the land use plan. Staff comments, um, staff finds this rezoning request to be consistent with the future land use map classification of county primary and secondary growth area. Uh, staff believes there are merits for this request of rezoning and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. That's regularly scheduled meeting on August first, twenty twenty-four. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously voted to recommend council approve the request of rezoning with a statement of consistency and reasonablest, reasonablest shown below, which is here in, um, council's report. Uh, that concludes staff's report. Be more than happy to answer any questions council might have and also please note the applicant is here with us tonight as well.
Council, have any questions to staff? Does the applicant want to make any statements? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, what do you want to do with zoning map amendment twenty-four oh six? And please use consistency or inconsistency statements with your motion.
Move to approve zoning map amendment twenty-four oh six with a consistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve the zoning map amendment twenty-four oh six with the consistency statement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. And if the applicant would want to look at voluntary annexation to get it all into season.
That's what I was hoping.
The whole plant.
That's right, the whole plant. That's right.
Council, we'll move on to agenda adjustments. I have one agenda adjustment I want to consider. I think council is ready to consider the parking on North Third Street in front of the senior center and down the length of that street to make a recommendation and allow our staff to work on that. Uh, we will go ahead. If council is good, we'll pass the agenda adjustment and go ahead and discuss that at this time.
Move it, move to, um, to amend the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move to amend the agenda. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, uh, we looked at three different options for Third Street and I think, uh, there was discussion of staying with option C, which would be parallel parking on each side. Staff would then take the time to look at the crosswalks and make sure they are located where they should be made. If council wishes to proceed with that, I'll entertain that motion. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
And the crosswalks, basically, we're probably just gonna change one for Central School and do away with the other one.
Probably what staff.
That's it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, have no unannounced, I do have one unannounced delegation. Mr. Devora Pond, three two eight South Fourth Street wants to talk about a street name.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Um, coming before you, um, I wanted to see if I could get the, um, it's Alfred Street right off of Cozen Street. I think it's about turning on Co- Alfred, about sixty-five yards to try to get the street renamed to either Pond Street or Daisy's Cir- I mean Pond Circle or Daisy's Circle. I understand we do have a Pond Street here in Albemarle, so by the old movie theater, it's P O N D. And I'm thinking P O N D S. But then too, as I was told, that nine-one-one communications might get the two mixed up, send one one way and send the other way. So if that wouldn't work, to try to get it, uh, named Daisy's Circle after my mom, uh, we the only family that's up there on that street now. And with us keeping it clean up there, it used to be a dumping area. And so we got that pretty in containment now and, uh, try to see if, uh, like I said, see if I can name it.
Do you own all the property on both sides of the street?
One, two, three, four, five, about six lots up there.
How many is that, Lee?
Uh, one, uh, two, we had a, um, a neighbor that passed away three months up there, which was dry. Uh, it wasn't dry. He passed away about three months up there. So we the only ones up there. And that the rest, uh, is just vacant part as you're turning on Alfred Street, which to the left, I think the Mills out of Charlotte on that little lot right there on the hill.
Typically, when we do a renaming, all the parties that own property that are joining it will agree to it or will get some kind of petition in writing saying you want to change it and all these parties are in agreement and they sign that petition. But you haven't done that yet, correct?
Well, don't nobody, you know, uh, ain't nobody else staying up there and then the party that do, that's been there a while, uh, that, that little area that's been there a while, uh, I don't know how to locate the Mills and it's just, just vacant and we keep it cut.
I would say you should send a letter to all property owners, Miss Burke, if you, I say something wrong, speak up. Send a letter to all property owners advising them what you're gonna ask for. And you're willing to pay the fee for all the advertisements and all for the, for the renaming. Because we have to advertise in the paper and all that and have a public hearing.
Okay, now what would those fees cost? You have idea?
Uh, you're better off to get with the planning officer back there, Kevin Robinson. He can give you more idea of what it would cost and what all you would have to do.
Which one is Kevin?
Okay.
Mr. Pond, I can assist you with, uh, the Mills family.
Oh, okay, okay.
What about, um, the Mack family?
Um, they don't have no problem with it. I've talked to them.
So you'll get your.
So it's just, only just Robert Mack that stay up there. So I've talked to him. So, uh, like I said, we've been up there, been up there about all my life, so, uh, since the sixties, so.
Council, let me ask you this before we have him go through all that. Is there any issue that you want to address before he goes through all this? Otherwise, we let him go back to the, bring all that back forward?
I think, I think it just needs to go through the appropriate steps and he just needs to come before us with all of the properties listed and who signed it and Kevin can help you through that process. I'd like to see it on paper so that they can be notified, even if you own most of it. It, it shows us then what the map looks like and who owns it and that kind of thing. So I think that's what we've got to do.
Okay, okay.
Thank, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, Miss.
If I could, uh, add in Robinson, my mention, uh, last week, week before, um, do we have a formal policy on this?
No, that's just typically what we have done.
Okay. I, it would, I know we don't get a lot of these private requests, but it would be helpful for staff to have a formal policy in place for how we treat these when they come in.
Mr. Clark, that would be nice for you to bring forward.
There's also some cost involved in this because we do have to notify everybody there. We have to go to the post office. We have to change everything in E nine-one-one in terms of staff time and mailouts and everything, get a little bit costly. Um, and I don't know, do we, if we need a formal public hearing for it or not, if that's.
I think you have to have a public hearing if you're gonna change the name and I think we'll leave that with Mr. Clark to come, come up with the policy.
That sounds good.
And he can get back with you about getting all the information to you and you can tell him when to. Do you think, Council, have anything further?
Len Dex, you'll get with me on the Mill.
Yeah, just, just give me a call tomorrow. I can get you that contact information.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no administrative reports. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Nine A, consider road closures for Braden Brew's Fall Street Festival. Nine B, consider road closures for the Albemarle Downtown Fall Festival. Nine C, Resolution twenty-four twenty-three, A X twenty-four oh three, petition for annexation for seventy-seven point two four acres referred to as Morgan Hills Phase Three, as located south of Marlbrook Drive. It is to set a public hearing for October the twenty-first. Nine D, Resolution twenty-four twenty-four, approving installment financing and security agreements with Pinnacle Bank. Nine E, Ordinance twenty-four twenty-eight, amending the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five operating budget. Nine F, Ordinance twenty-four twenty-nine, amending the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five operating budget. One was for the Catalyst Grant Program. The other is for the solid waste collection equipment. Nine G, Ordinance twenty-four thirty, adopting a grant project budget for the water system asset inventory assessment. Nine H is the Ordinance twenty-four thirty-one, adopting a grant project budget for the wastewater system asset inventory assessment. Nine I is the Ordinance twenty-four thirty-two, adopting a grant project budget for the Five Points Redevelopment Project. Nine J, Ordinance twenty-four thirty-three, adopting a capital project fund for the twenty-twenty-three Capital Fund Program Award. Nine K, Public Housing Architectural Services Contract Renewal. Nine L, HVAC Maintenance and Repair Services for the City Department of Public Health. Does anyone have anything to pull off? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd like to pull off nine B for discussion.
Pull off nine B for discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the?
And I would like to pull off K and L just because they are public housing and I would like them to be separate and apart from the public, from the consent agenda, because it has to do with public housing.
I've had them request to pull nine B, nine K, and nine L.
So the second.
Motion, I entertain a motion.
Um, sudden move.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Nine B, Mr. Drew Aldridge.
Uh, yes, sir. That's in regards to the Fall Fest on October the twenty-fourth from five to seven. Uh, in years past, as everybody here knows, that's the largest, basically the largest, I think, the largest event in downtown Albemarle. Uh, my request, I've had a business owner, uh, I've been in discussion and is there any way, and I don't know, Joey and I have had this discussion a little bit, uh, prior to this meeting. Um, is there any way that we could move the, the road closure from, uh, from North Street down to, uh, Wilson Street? You've got at least two businesses on Second Street and I know of five businesses on First Street. All, all, all we'll be doing is extending it, the closure down to Wilson Street for that festival.
Council, what's your comment? Question?
So, so close Wilson as well?
No, it would, from, from Wilson, basically from Wilson to South Street. You, we'd be moving the barriers down one block.
Have we talked, have we talked to Yori Bank and some of the other ones since we'll be blocking their exit out of that way? They usually go out the back way and go out of North Street.
That wouldn't block them.
On First Street. You would if you, if you, if they couldn't go out the back way and go out North Street and go out on First.
But North can be blocked anyway, right?
No, no, we block it at North. So you're actually asking to block North Street and, and First and Second, all the way to Wilson. North Street usually stays open.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna do that, we need to, need to approach them.
Sure.
So there's no problem with continuing this to the next meeting to give time to approach them.
Yeah.
But we need to.
I'd like to entertain that motion that we further discuss.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to continue nine B to the next meeting.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion?
And, and based on that, who is going to contact those folks? I mean, is that something that, that Lindsay and her group are gonna talk to or, or Joy's here?
Yeah.
I just, I think that we've got to be specific as to who we're trying to talk to.
I was gonna ask which businesses we need to be contacting.
Uh, well, who's gonna be affected by the?
Well, why don't you get with him after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Right now, nine K and nine L, Ms. Hall.
And I just, I am, I am fine with both of them. We would move to approve the two of them. I just, anything that has to do with public housing, I would rather not be on the consent agenda with the issues that we've got over there. So move approval of nine J and nine K.
Second.
I have a motion by.
Wait a minute.
You asked for K and L.
K and L, excuse me, it is K and L. But you know what?
You want J and.
J.
We've already approved J.
Yeah.
Well, here's the thing, you all. I just believe that we've got with the issues going on at public here, public housing, we need to sort of separate them at times. Um, and that's the Capital Fund Campaign, so bad on me. That one should have been as well. Uh, but move approval of K and L.
I have a motion to approve nine K and nine L.
Second.
Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving into new business. Ten A, Presentation of Approval and Consideration for McGill Associates for the Parks. 10A, Presentation of Approval and Consideration for McGill Associates for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Contract. Mr. Clark, do you have comments or going straight to yourself?
We'll go straight to Lisa, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro temp and Rest of the Council, and Mr. Clark. Through an extensive process with our request for qualifications, I am proud to announce that McGill has won the, I thought I was moving. McGill has won the award from the evaluation team to do the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And I'd also like to recognize our evaluation team, and that consisted of myself, Darren Rhodes, the Assistant City Manager, Kevin Robinson, the Planning Director, Danielle Dobbs Jackson, the Assistant Parks and Rec Director, Julie Curtis, who is on the Albemarle Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Todd Sullivan, the Park Superintendent. So I'm going to introduce McGill and Associates and let them tell you a little bit about themselves.
Housekeeping first. How many, how many RFQs did you get?
I got three. And I interviewed and took all three through the full process. Come on, Nate.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Nate Halukka. I'm one of the members of the McGill team that'll be working with Lisa and the town, I'm sorry, the city. We're, we're really excited about this. It's an opportunity for us to, first and foremost, understand the citizens' needs and their desires. Those needs and desires will help us shape what Parks and Recreation will look like in the future. And it really will not just be an opportunity to, to help shape the Parks and Rec Department's operations. What we're finding is that more and more Parks and Recreation has a role in building the culture and building the livability of an area. Those are all things that'll be key as we start to, to look in and dive deeply into what makes the City of Albemarle so great, and then finding out what your, your public wants as we start to move forward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We're looking forward to move forward. Yes, sir.
What's the difference between a master plan and a strategic plan?
So there, there's, there's a bit of both in it. So a comprehensive plan is going to look at your entire system, and there is a strategic component to it. So not only are we going to look at your overarching needs, but then what are kind of the years that things are going to start to play out over time? There's typically like a capital improvements component in, in it as well. That's a little bit different than a site-specific master plan that's going to drill down into one specific park. I hope that addresses your question.
Ms. Counsel, you may be able to answer this. Do you, I don't recall, is this the same company that we dealt with whenever we had the last countywide recreation master plan?
No, it is not. And that is one thing I wanted, this is a great day for Albemarle because this will be our first individual master plan. I'm thinking that plan was done by Alta, and I don't even know if they're still in business. I haven't seen their name out there.
So, so based on the timeline, today is September the 3rd. Based on, if I did my calculations correctly, next September, we ought to have a plan. Is that right?
Yeah, so one of the, that is, I would say that's a liberal timeline. What's really important is not only are we going to help kind of craft the strategy to help your community, but we also make sure that we're being mindful of any grant deadlines and things that are coming up in the future. So, so that's one component about trying to, to make sure that we're well within that one-year timeline. The other thing is that it's important, as we start to find out what the public's needs are, we don't want to just sit on that data. We want to make sure the citizen base knows that they're not only being heard, but what we're hearing is being translated into concrete methods to move forward. So the one-year is a liberal timeline. Yes, ma'am.
I guess the follow-up to that would be, you know, by September, we're in month three of a new budget year. And it's wonderful. You've got all these ideas and plans, but even if you do it in a year, then we're not looking at really appropriating money or how much money we would do anything with for yet another nine months. So I guess that's just the reason I'll say that because February, February 25, we'll be looking at, you know, fiscal 25, 26.
We're going to be mindful that you're going to, to roll into a new fiscal year in July and keep that in mind. Now, the other thing that we don't want to do, we want to make sure that we're not rushing through the timeline. But we will be mindful to try and move as quickly as we can without losing quality.
I'm sure Lisa, I'm Ben Dry, I'm sure Lisa has told you, we're in the middle of a very strategic growth coming into Albemarle, probably in the next, what, Mayor, five to 10 years.
You would think so.
We got that...
Less than that.
Few thousand houses coming in, which if you multiply that by two children, and I proposed this for a long time, we have got to do a, a really good job in meeting all the needs of these people coming from outside of Stanley County that have parks, that have ball fields for all kinds of sports. And I'm sure you'll be looking into that. Is that, would that be a correct statement?
Can I introduce this a little bit? Nate, if you'll just talk to them a little bit about maybe the two or three plans that you have just completed or that you're in the middle of, maybe especially Harrisburg, it being the most diverse community in our area.
Yeah, so to your point, so a, a couple of plans that we're currently working on are the, the town of Harrisburg, which is in Cabarrus County outside of Mecklenburg, that's experiencing over, between eight and eight-plus percent growth a year. We're not only looking at that growth, but then also how their Parks and Recreation Department is attracting visitors and what that's doing to help shape their community. We're also working with the town of Troy on their comprehensive plan. I mean, y'all have the amazing Uaries basically right on your front porch. That, that is, it was designed as North Carolina Central Park, and more and more people, as North Carolina urbanizes, are going to be able to look, are looking for places that have city amenities but also can get out in nature. And y'all are ideally situated to serve those needs, among others.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, where, where's your office located at? Where are you, you all based out of?
Yeah, so we're, we're spread around the state. So most of the rest of the land planning team is based out of Hickory. I am based in the Raleigh office, but I did get to Campiny Wari's about a month ago. So I'm, I'm happy to come out here.
Further questions?
I would also like to add that this is the only firm that we interviewed that also had former Parks and Recreation professionals on their team, so they know what Parks and Recreation stat, they're up to date on the trends, they know what we go through in the field, so they're able to adapt that way as well.
Yeah, so just to that point, we have a Recreation Resource Service Consultant that worked out at NC State. We have a former Parks Director that was the Director of Asheville and also Sampson County. And then I manage the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and Land and Water Conservation Fund for the state. So that plus all of our land planning, the rest of the group.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve. Second by Councilmember Dry for McGill Associates for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Contract. Further questions? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
All right, you guys, get ready with your visions. They're coming to you. They're want to know.
10B, Presentation for Approval of iteration for the NCDOT and City of Albemarle Call Share for Utility Relocation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. NCDOT is planning a proposed project here at the intersection of St. Martin Road and West Main Street, right in front of the, the recently constructed Dollar General. You may remember with this, this development project that Dollar General was required to construct a left-turn lane into the site. NCDOT's current plans are to actually extend that left-turn lane to extend all the way to St. Martin Road. So if you travel that way, like I do on the way home, you probably see people going into the left-turn lane thinking they're trying to go on to St. Martin, and they come right back out. So I, I think this is overall a good proposed plan. So what we're talking about tonight is the, there is a proposed relocation. It's a very minor relocation of an existing water line. In their preliminary engineering design, they found a future stormwater drainage improvement that they're going to implement as part of this project is in conflict with our existing eight-inch asbestos concrete water line. So this, this agreement is fairly standard from what you have likely seen before with the 2427 utility relocation project and the highway project, also the Bethany Road Bridge Replacement Project where we relocated a water line because of that. The associated costs with this for the city is $7,000. It's 25% of the total cost of the project, so NCDOT would cover the remaining $28,000 associated with the project. We're able to fund this out of current funds. Overall, staff is, is in agreement with DOT's proposed project, not just with the, the above-surface aspect of the project, but with the subsurface aspect of the project. We're in, we're in agreement with the special provisions of notifying adjacent business owners, as well as us, to perform inspections for their contractors to do the work under our supervision. Overall, we're recommending approval of this agreement. Happy to entertain any questions.
Above the price.
Should have been done when it was built.
Exactly right.
For us, can do it for only $7,000. That's, I think that's a very good deal.
That is exceptional.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to 10C. Update on Lone Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project and Special Order by Consent.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council, and Manager Clark. Good to see you this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Have three fairly minor things to chat with you about. Most of all, we wanted to have a discussion and let you ask us questions and your team questions and, and kind of seek your feedback. And one of the three will ask for action on. The other two will most likely come back for, for formal accurate, action at a later date. Two of these topics are related to your efforts at the wastewater treatment plant. One related to the construction project that just finished up, as you saw in the spring in town. So the first one, Special Order by Consent, what we're here for your consideration of tonight is the application for an amendment to that document motivated by changing the compliance schedule. I'll go over the dates in a minute, but to, to refresh your memory, you entered into this SOC formally. Our team started on this, believe it or not, in 2019. It, it took about three years to get through DEQ's approval process. The, the document that's in place now was approved or signed by DEQ in October of 2022. And what a Special Order by Consent means, and these are my words, it's a little bit of you waving the white flag. This, most of this was following the sustained non-compliance events at the wastewater plant going back from 2018 through most of 2019. And it was the recognition by both DEQ and your staff that there is a way to fix this, however, it's going to take time, and it's going to take funding. And so the Special Order by Consent is a negotiation between you and DEQ where it relaxes your compliance requirements over some time period so that you can acquire funding and you can implement capital projects to fix the issues. The document that was signed in 2022 does stipulate milestones for both your collection system and the wastewater plant. As I say in the third bullet, while it was just one month ahead of schedule, the, the collection system efforts did finish in May, or the, the scope of, of work is, is tasked, is finished, and was one month ahead. And what we're here to talk with you about tonight is modifying the milestones, the timeline for the efforts at the wastewater plant. And most of the requests to change the timeline is motivated by the next item I'm going to talk to you about, which is the opportunity for some extra funds. So the whole concept is we have a project that is intended to satisfy the requirements of the SOC. You do have the opportunity to use some additional funding. If you choose to use that additional funding, it's going to take longer to implement the project just because of the larger scope, and that motivates the change in time. Just to see the details of what we're talking about, the middle column is what is in the approved document. The column on the right would be the extended timeframe. So it pushes it out about two years, two and a half years. And we have, before we put this together for tonight, back in the spring and summer, we talked with and met with DEQ staff, presented these deadlines or milestones to them in a preliminary memo, right, just to, hey, here's what we're thinking, and here's why, and can you give us feedback? And their feedback was, at least on a preliminary basis, was positive. Their direction was have the SOC amendment signed and send it in, and they will review. The process from here, Special Order, Special Orders by Consent tend to take a low priority. You saw earlier, the previous one took three years to get through DEQ's process. And frankly, most of that was them allocating time to review it. It wasn't a back and forth as much as it was a stall on their part, on their part. But upon a signature of the amendment, which is a very short application, I think it was in your packet, we would submit that. DEQ staff would review it. They would offer feedback. Changes in milestones do stipulate that the document has to go back to public notice. If you recall, back in 2021, I believe it was, the previous document sat on public notice and received public comment. That would happen again. Following public comment, there would be an amended SOC that would be signed by DEQ. And we went through this, Mayor, a few years ago. The document, if it's modified at all, sometimes these dates move a month or two, it would come back to you for your approval of the final document. So what we're asking for tonight is fairly simple. We want to answer any questions you have, but, but approving this amendment and authorize either Mayor yourself or the city manager to sign so we can submit it for DEQ review.
And really, the only thing we're asking for is the date.
That is correct. Yes.
And just to, to, to update folks, some folks on Council may not have ever been here during part of this. What are the benefits, I mean, why are we having to do this based on the original dates? Because the original dates, as you indicated, took a period of time to begin with. And it looks like that you would have developed that date long enough to be able to have gotten it all done. You might take a couple of minutes to talk about why we are where we are.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It's a good question, but because these dates were set, the dates in the middle column here were set in 2022, I believe, based on feedback. So at the time, the project or, or the, the solution to the SOC was, was two parallel paths. One is implement the collection system rehabilitation, and the other is implement the wastewater plant rehabilitation. The collection system at that time, Council and staff, you had committed to, and, and you were, you were charging ahead. The wastewater plant rehab project at that time had not necessarily been fully committed to. We'll talk about in a minute. It's about an 18-plus million-dollar project. It's a substantial undertaking for you. And, you know, there was a lot of time and effort to consider, is that the right path for the city, and wisely so. That created some delay. And I'll offer, just to be very candid and upfront, the, the workload from the American Rescue Plan over the last 18 months for folks like us and everyone else that, that does this type of project has been substantial. And so that also has created some of the, of the delays, not just on our side, but the other layers to our, you know, there's a major electrical component to this as well, so that, that created some delays. I'll also offer, and I agree, going from this middle one, or sorry, the, you know, from starting construction in July of this year to February of 2027, and I may have that date wrong, I think that day is actually the 24, July of 2025. That's my mistake.
The original one?
I think the original one is. I, I have it in my packet. Part of the challenge is this project requires a, an authorization to construct, which is the permit that the DEQ agency issues for the project. And that permit alone takes nine to 12 months inside DEQ's office to provide. Those are the dates they give us. That's the timeline they give us to budget from a scheduling, which is a long time, right? That's a long time to go through just a single permit process. So that, that, Ms. Hall, is, is a lot of what was energizing this. But I will say, if there was not the opportunity for the additional funding that we're going to talk about next, then the date certainly would not be as long as they are, and they may not even be changed at all, right? Because we, we've known about this funding for about six months. We've just been kind of working with your team. And when I say we, your, your team has known about it. So we've been forecasting the right way to, to use it and come to. So if it wasn't for that extra funding, the project, we may not be asking for these deadline changes.
Follow-up, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the big issues, and I'm glad you brought this out, is the American Rescue Plan because there was so much money here in North Carolina, both individually to... to local municipalities and local governments, as well as to the state to give away-
Correct.
-that you all were probably just inundated, because there's not so many of you all that can do this.
That's a very fair assessment. I had our local senator from Moore County say, when you fill a five-gallon bucket and it has a quarter-inch drain, it's going to drain very slowly. That was his assessment of it. The volume of work that was, and still is, pushed into the water and wastewater pipeline far exceeded the capacity of the resources to do it. The engineering piece to that is coming to an end, right? We're not working 60-hour weeks anymore in our shop. The construction piece of that is getting ready to start, yeah, and it's going to be a very busy construction market in North Carolina for the next two years. Okay, so the question, Mayor, again, we'll answer any more questions. Consider approving the application for the amendment that was in your packet, and either, Mayor, you or designate the manager to sign.
Counsel, have any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval with the manager authority.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll move right into the second part of the wastewater plant. So this is the opportunity you have for some additional funding that was formerly awarded about a year ago. So let me back up though, you currently have this project, this wastewater plant, we call it comprehensive rehabilitation. It's a $19 million, $19,700,000 total project budget. You have 18,880 in loan funds. You do have a half a million in grant, and you have a 2% match that you have to meet. So that's the project that's fully funded. The scope is at the top, you know, the major motivation here is creating a change in the aeration process that gives your operators a higher likelihood to battle a large fluctuation and changes in influent flows, both volume and constituent. And then the entirety of the electrical upgrades, if you remember from back in 2013 through 2015, the challenges that were experienced, all of that wrapped into a multi-year approach, so the entirety of that is also wrapped into this project. Back in the fall of 2022, about, almost exactly two years ago, we were before you, and you approved the funding application, and the intent of that application was actually, if you remember at the time, this was the last round of the competitive American Rescue Plan funds, and you had just been designated distressed, if you remember that designation. Most of that was motivated by the SOC that had been approved. So the strategy was, you have access to a different pot of money, let's see if we can apply for and get some or a large chunk of this wastewater plant project switched over to grant funds. That did not pan out. It was a much more competitive round than they had funds available. However, the funding agency did come back last summer and say they would offer to the city $14,650,000 in near-zero-interest loan funds, the same 0.1% interest that you have on the current project, or the current funds already awarded would apply to this. And these funds are not ARPA project funds, or not ARPA funds. They do not have the U.S. Treasury deadline of December 2026. They can be used for anything rehabilitative in nature at the wastewater plant. Now, we tried and tried and tried to get those shifted to maybe use at the water plant, because as you know, you have some challenges at your water plant that impact operation at the wastewater plant, and after climbing that ladder and getting multiple nodes, we've settled on the wastewater plant. We've talked with your staff and your operators on what we could use this money for. The two at the top are the ones that, these are projects that have been in kind of the back burner and maybe come to the front burner some and then haven't panned out, but converting from gas chlorine to liquid bleach for your disinfection, and then constructing a sludge de-watering facility so your waste product is de-watered and hauled off as cake or dirt as opposed to liquid. Number three is a relatively low-cost item, and we could work with your team to maybe pull that one out. And then item four would be, hold those loan funds just in case you need them for a budget shortfall on the scope that you really want to implement. Those were kind of the top four uses that we worked for your team. Just to give you an order of magnitude, the two at the top are the ones that staff considers the most important, we agree, totaled just under $10 million, about 9.3, I think, was the total for those two. No action needed at this time. The real purpose for this, in the next couple of months, we need to give the funding agency feedback on how you plan to use these funds, somewhat at their request, they've said, take your time, because they're processing all of the ARPA projects, they're just as inundated as the consultants are. So they said, no rush, take your time and give us some feedback when you're ready. So in the next month or two, there needs to be some consideration of what you would like to use if, and what you would like to use these funds for, and then we will work with your team to prepare the documents that would secure that, you know, their legal approval of funding documents that you have to approve.
In a nutshell, tell me how this sludge process is going to work, because we've been through that before, and I want to know what the difference is of what we're going to do this time. Tell me about it.
Well, conceptually, what happens when you, so sludge is the waste product of the wastewater treatment, and it comes off the process, it's about 5% by volume of the total volume. So if you take a million gallons in, about 50,000 gallons in volume comes off as waste, the other 950 goes, is basically water and gets discharged to the creek. The volume, when it comes off the wastewater stream, is liquid, it looks like liquid, just a dark chocolate milk, and what you do is you feed a, in general, you feed a polymer, a chemical that helps the solids bind together, and then through some kind of mechanical means, you separate the solids from the water. It's a belt press, it's a centrifuge, it's a screw press, and there's some other mechanisms, but you're, simply speaking, you're adding energy so that the water and the solids get separated. The result is a water, we call filtrate, which is just, it looks like water, it goes back to the wastewater process, right, right back through the plant, and then cake, which is, it looks a little bit like wet dirt, and that is generally landfill. It can be land-applied, but that's not as prevalent, like most people who, in this part of the world, landfill it. Is there any here question? Sorry.
I got you.
Yeah. And you mentioned going through this before, you did have a centrifuge, that's been, it's been a long time ago, it's been probably 2009, 2010 was the last time it was in operation.
So what would that save us on the process we're doing now, as far as operating costs?
Good question. Your current process today, you do not generate much of a waste stream. Now, that's a different discussion, and we talk with your team often about our concerns over that, but in general, when the project is completed, that is already underway, you will generate a waste stream, no ifs, ands, or buts. And it'll be managed absent some type of de-watering facility. It would, the waste stream would be managed the way you did in 20, up until about 2019, which is put it in a tanker truck and haul it to the Rocky River wastewater plant owned and operated by WASAC, Watersuit Authority of Carris County, where they burn it in their incinerator, is what they do. So from, sorry, your question was what would it save us, and you asked for the time and I built you a clock, sorry. I don't know the numbers, although I could prepare them for staff and share them with you. Your savings are, for one, the cost of hauling, right? Because you were doing two, sometimes three trucks a day, tractor trailer trucks, and it was 59 miles round trip or something like that. Two is the cost of paying WASAC to receive it. So when you're shipping liquid waste, the volume is much higher than when you're disposing of cake, right? Because you have all the water in it. So when you de-water it, you take most of the water out and send it back through your process, that's just, and then it eventually makes its way to the creek, and then you would take the cake and most likely haul it to your landfill. And there's a cost to that. It's not a zero-cost disposal, I recognize, the departments have to work together on that, but it's a noticeable savings.
So environmentally too, it's probably a better process?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yes.
Could that be used as a cover material for landfills?
You know, I'd be outside my comfort zone to answer that, that'd be a question for your landfill. I do, I know it has been done, as a capping for the landfill. In other places, there's probably some quantitative testing that would have to be done to verify that.
Adam, I may have missed it somewhere, $14 million is a lot of money. Where'd we get that?
Well, it's, it is a lot of money, and it's loan money. It's not grant money, and that's part of why this is a discussion, this is not a, hey, let's charge forward and do this, right? We recognize committing to additional debt services, even if it's a million dollars.
That's okay. I misunderstood that. I thought it was a grant.
No, sir, it's a loan.
There's a big difference between a grant and a loan.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Talk about demolition in a minute.
Yes.
Talk about the demolition, third option. If I recall correctly, I believe I heard when we started this entire process, we were not going to get rid of those extra units because they would be overflowing. Future, we would be able to convert them doing the same thing. Why would we even consider demolition now?
So the demolition that we're talking about on three is not what you're speaking of. This, what would be considered for demolition are the old 1930s structures that are at the main part of the plant when you come in the-
Coming in.
Correct. Not the process units down, we call them A-plant and B-plant, not the B-plant units, it's the old A-plant. And the reason to demolish those, one, there's a reclamation of real estate component, eventually you'll have enough land there that you can do something with it. And the two, there's a safety concern. It's not a huge safety concern because it is a protected area, but a lot of those structures are open pit and don't have handrails and the things that they would need to have.
Kind of money you talking about for that part?
Oh goodness, you could spend millions to demolish it. We would not plan to do that, you know, this is a piecemeal phase, you know, working with your team, and I should say, this is a low priority. Number three is very low priority compared to the first two.
Give me dollar figures on one and two.
About nine and a half million, one and two combined.
Separate them now.
Oh, number two is the most. Number one is about two and a half million, and number two is about seven. So I think that Mr. Brandlet, Dr. Brandlet had a great point. This is loan money, not grant money, so prudent consideration of committing to it is, you know, that's why we're here, not asking for action, just simply getting your feedback.
The benefits of liquid bleach over good gas chlorine, other than, you know-
Yeah, it tends to be, the benefits tend to be obvious. There's not a real operational savings. Some operators like one over the other, but both work just fine. We've designed and implemented plants all across the state that use both, not use both, that use each one. We've talked to your operators, and they're on board and support this. You know, gas chlorine is very, very dangerous, very dangerous, and the documents you have to prepare for the EPA to meet their requirements, to house as much chlorine as you have to have, it's some pretty dire stuff in those documents, you know, it's down to which way do you run if there's a problem, so that's the real motivator, is the safety concern.
Kind of storage capacity we talking about on liquids?
You know, that's, Mayor, I believe we had sized three different 8,000-gallon tanks, so about 20,000 to 25,000 gallons of bleach is what you would need. So bleach is, and it's, excuse me, it's basically household bleach, just higher strength. Household bleach is 5% strength. Usually, this industrial bleach is delivered at 15% strength. Sunlight and heat are, will degrade it over time, so you put these in a building, not usually conditioned, but in a building where it protects it from the sun, and you can ventilate it in the real hot months, so it doesn't get, you know, into 90, 95 degrees.
How long does a 8,000-gallon tank, 8,500-gallon tank last?
That'd be, the statutory requirement is 30 days minimum. We usually design around 60 days, and we give you multiple tanks so that, the goal would be one tank can accept a whole tanker truck-
Right.
-and then you could have one almost empty while the other's almost full, you know, we kind of balance that with your operations. But three 8,000-gallon tanks would be 24,000 gallons, it'd last you about 90 days. Actually, under your current, it's flow rated also, under your current flow regime, it would last much longer than that. You know, if you had that volume today, you probably wouldn't fill all three of them, you would only fill one or two. Good question.
Questions?
Do you want to add something real quick? So I, we realize that this is loan funding, and we are very cognizant of, you know, additional debt service onto the books, especially with all the other capital improvements that we're making as well. I do want to draw attention to that this loan funding is at the 0.1% interest, so I'm not trying to sell it based on that point, but it is loan funding that we would otherwise not be able to acquire at that low interest rate. So that's one thing to consider, and two of these items, the first two items are items that we have attempted to place into our five-year CIP, but they have not ranked high enough for us to be able to put them in there. So with the loan funding being available to us after it was awarded, that's, these are items that we are now considering, especially since we have to use this specific funding inside the fence. So it is somewhat stipulated funding. I just wanted to throw that out there. And Adam made a good point when he was talking to us, is we thought it may be a good idea to secure the loan funding, not necessarily spend it, but secure the full amount, saying that we intend to make plans for this project, and then if we change our idea and we don't spend all of it, we just don't spend all of it, and therefore, we don't get reimbursed those loan funds, you know, as part of the process. So I just wanted to interject that statement for consideration.
What's the timeframe there, though, at that 0.1%? What is the timeline?
You mean the term?
Well, how long do we have it before we have to say yes, we want it? And then how long is the term?
I don't have an exact answer for you. The state has been, the funding agency has been very patient, mostly because they are so busy with the American Rescue Plan.
Yeah.
So this is just based on my personal opinion. I think that there should be a plan of your intent to use these funds, say, before the end of the year, so that the documents can be prepared, then you secure the, otherwise, if you don't submit the documents to them to secure it, then they're going to start wanting to maybe take it and give it to someone else.
Right, right.
So completing those documents and approving those documents is not the same as spending the money, right?
Right.
So that'd be step one. You know, once those are approved, you would have six, seven years to actually get this done if you needed, if you needed to take that long.
And end of year, end of calendar year, end of fiscal year?
End of calendar year, sorry. Good question.
So that's tomorrow, when you think about it?
It's a few months.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Adam and Jake, can you speak to LGC approval? Have we gone through that process, or is that still forthcoming?
I do not believe the primary project as currently funded has gone for LGC approval yet. It hasn't quite reached that maturity. It'd be close, though. So on this funding, the Division of Water Infrastructure kind of ushers you through that process, and I'm sure your finance team is rolling their eyes when they say, when I say that, because I know that there's some effort on their part, but they typically usher you through the process, and I would expect that would be coming up in the next six, eight months.
Thank you. I just want to make sure city council is aware I had to go through that approval process.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, have any concerns that you want to ask Adam about? I mean, we're only obligating to just have the money there if we need it, and if we don't need it, we turn it loose.
That's right. So I can't tell if there's action to be, oh.
No, no.
There you go, there's what I was looking for.
But we just wanted to make, we wanted you to hear it and think about it, and we'll talk with your team and come back to you in the next couple of months with some more formal documents.
All right.
Thank you.
Get a little breather there. Thank you. Are you doing further on the Phase 3?
I can.
My next item is update on the Phase 3 Santer Sewer I&amp;I project.
With Jake's permission, I can roll right into that, if you please. Sure, it'd be my pleasure. Yes, so we wanted to give you an update and then talk about one topic at the end. No action needed tonight. Again, this is kind of, let's talk through what we think, and then we'll talk about next steps after that. Just to refresh your memory, this project started, funding was awarded, gosh, time flies, 2019, I believe. Construction started right a year ago, you know, last summer, and construction basically finished in April. Dellinger Incorporated did the work, they've done a couple of jobs for you, did a fine job, $7.7 million in loan. This was not the near-zero percent, this was market rate, 20-year, 1.38%. The project's done minus one segment at five points that we're going to talk about tonight, and there's 130,000 in contingency funds left in the overall budget. So we want to talk to you about the issue at five points, and this is something that we have known about during design, and now that we got into construction, it's a little worse than we thought. We have the plan, but we- We have the plan, but we want to talk to you and see what your, what your preference is. There is some property acquisition components to it, so there's, there's no action needed tonight. Us and your staff are still working out all those details. And if you give a direction tonight, you know, we'll come back to you in a month or so and, and ask for formal consideration. But to give you just a quick feedback of what we're talking about, I trust you somewhat recognize, this is Five Points Public Market here. Can you all see the mouse as I'm moving around?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is Five Points. This is Fourth Street. Yes, I don't know the names as well as Ms. Hall does, Fourth Street. So right now, the sewer is collected and runs on this red line at an angle through these properties. And there is a line underneath a corner of this building and about eight feet from the corner of this building. So the blue line is what we're considering as a replacement, which is basically change the angle some and then turn and come into Fourth Street and then realign this so it comes together. It's a fairly substantial undertaking. Some of you may kind of recognize this or can think about what this looks like. There's a creek there, there's a concrete culvert. It's a, it's not a, a simple undertaking. Couple of pictures here. Both of these pictures are kind of taken in the same place. One's looking to the north-ish, one's looking to the south. On the left of your screen, the building in the back is Five Points Public House or Public, yeah, Public House. The building here, the foreground, is the one that the sewer, the sewer is kind of from the pic, whoever's taking the picture, right through this wheel and right under the corner of the building is where the sewer line goes. And you can see this is a, a concrete storm structure that goes diagonally all the way across. And actually, that structure starts, you can see it in the shadow here, and that structure runs all the way across to the other side of the intersection. So there's, there's some complexity to it. Yes, sir.
The blue line will miss that culvert?
The blue line would go underneath that culvert here, vertically below it. Yes.
Okay.
Any other way not bothering that culvert? I always think that we opened up a can of worms there, and I don't think we.
Yeah, we, it's a good question, and that was one of our first concerns. We've studied this in a lot of detail with the contractor who is doing the work, and we have a high level of certainty that, that we can get underneath it without disturbing, without having to tear out and replace that culvert.
I guess my concern, and we've been having this very discussion with DOT about some stormwater down there, and they don't want to touch that culvert. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to touch it.
Okay.
So I guess I'm asking, is there any way we can get around not having to touch that culvert?
Well, you, you're going to have to navigate it somehow, because you have to get from one side of it to the other side. The proposal we had, in fact, we, we talked with the contractor about boring under it. And, you know, that had a price. And when they looked at it in greater detail, once we got the survey back and we knew exactly where the pipeline was, we feel relatively certain we can excavate on both sides and then just pull out the dirt for a small section and sleeve the pipe under and then backfill.
Is topo too extreme to go on south on Fourth Street further, getting closer up there to near green and cutting down between them houses there?
It is too extreme. The low spot is about where this yellow manhole is. If you go south, Fourth Street goes uphill. And if you go north, it goes uphill a little bit. We looked, this is actually a City of Albemarle right-of-way, right here, oddly, between those, the zero lot line houses. It's just simply too tight to get, to get that pipeline through.
Is it really? Because that just seems to be a lot less intrusive.
Yeah, it, those two houses are only about 25 feet apart and getting that constructed. I mean, it may frankly be even tighter than that. Getting the pipeline through there would, would be nearly impossible.
But that is our, that's our right-of-way. I mean, that, that.
That is your right-of-way.
25 foot there is ours.
Yeah, don't quote me on the 25 feet, but there is a, there is a, there is a, according to the tax map, there is a deeded right-of-way there. Yes.
And all that other down through here where the blue line is, is a property we already own.
Yeah, this jagged piece here is your property. And I understand your concern. If, if it's okay with you, Mayor, let me talk through this a little more and then we can, we can address that. A couple of pictures, so the, I mentioned the pipeline is under the corner of the building on your left. On the right, this picture's taken almost in the same place, just looking the opposite direction. And that red line is the approximate location of the sewer line, excuse me. It's about eight feet off the corner of that structure. So the proposal would move this just a little bit over in here, so it wouldn't be so close to that building. Cost, as you can imagine, and Mayor, from your comments, this is not an inexpensive endeavor, but there's, there is a, a bright side of the equation. 361,000 is the negotiation, you know, the cost that we've worked with the contractor on based on the scope. And, you know, there's a, we feel good about the level of detail that's gone into this. However, financially, I mentioned earlier, you still have 130,000 in contingency on the budget. You also have 211,000 in what's going to be a deduct from the current contract amount based somewhat on, about half of that is based on the efforts that were in the scope at this location, right? That's a swap. And then the other is just quantity underruns. We had a couple of places where we cut manholes out and we realigned and saved some things. So now you have about 341,000 in savings that would come off that could go against this 361. At the bottom of the page in italics, if you did this, if you approved this change order, not asking for it tonight, if you did in the future, it would take about $40,000 in city funds to get the work done. And that 40,000 is calculated through two numbers. One, about 20 of it is the difference between 361 and 341. And then the other 20 is there's some elements to what would have to be done that we would not recommend running through the construction contract. Most of all, there's two things. There's one large tree in the back that I believe is on your property that would need to come down. And then there's a plumbing connection that's tricky because that house or the structure where the pipe goes under, the service connection now comes straight down into the pipe that we would abandon. So we have to get that out and around. And this late in the game, the funding agency, if the contractor is going to solicit a new subcontractor, there's a fairly rigorous process to do that. Just makes more sense for the city to contract that directly. So that's a mouthful to say implementing this $361,000 cost. It would exhaust the loan funds and then still cost about $40,000 roughly of city funds to get the job done. Now, options, of course, option one is do nothing, right? So if we do nothing, then we would close out the current construction contract, close out the loan funds. The loan would be reduced by about $340,000 currently. And we would, you know, we know this problem exists, it needs to be addressed at some point, but it would be pushed to a later date. To give you a feel for the financial impact, $341,000, 20 years, 1.38%. This program is a simple interest calculation, so it's equal principal payments declining interest. So your first year's payment is the heist. So your 341,000 makes a difference of $21,000 a month, excuse me, a year, or 392,000 over the life of the loan, just to give you a feel for the financial impact. Number two is to implement the change order at some point so that your work could be done under the current contract. It would be done before the end of this calendar year, and it would cost about $40,000 of city funds. And number three, if you wanted to, and we've talked to your staff about this, you could close out the loan funds, close out the construction contract and say, this is a significant enough challenge that we want to get formal, or not formal, we want to get competitive bids. We would solicit informal bids for the scope of work and, and go down that path. I don't have a high level of comfort of saying that would result in saving anything. It's actually a risk. It would, costs could go up. And it does, however, give you comfort that you're getting competitive pricing. But most importantly, if you go that route, you would have to use city funds for the entire cost. You would not be able to use the loan funds. Mayor, that's the end of my presentation, so that what we're here for you on the last piece is to just talk through this, let you kind of understand where the project stands and let you ask us questions, and then we'll come back in a month or so with, with feedback.
To be honest with you, I have several questions, but I think, I don't think I can ask them to you tonight.
Okay.
We need to do something else as a body first.
Understand? Sure.
Somebody else got questions?
Yes.
I have one.
Yes, Dr. Branlet.
When I look at this, that's sort of a major undertaking. Why did we not pick that, pick up on that when we started the project at the beginning? We've known where that sewer was. It looks like a very obvious situation. How did we not come up with that when we started the project?
Well, we, we had a repair in the scope and, in the bid documents and in the contract. What happened as the contractor got involved and their, what we were going to do was align this. We were going to put in a liner to, to just reinforce the pipe that's there. And as their subcontractor, the contractor subcontractor, their video team got in, the existing pipe underneath this building is in worse shape than we discovered during design, to, to an extent where it was bad enough that they were able to justify under the contract documents, it's a change of condition. And their stance is frankly, they really do not want to do it. They think it's too risky. And as you understand, if, if they try to fix that and the house collapses, you have a major, major problem. And then if you, if you try and fix it and the pipe fails, you're almost in just as bad of a spot, because then you back up and you have to do what we're talking about doing. So, Dr. Branlet, it's a good question. You're part of the savings, excuse me, where did I go here? Down. You're part of this $211,000 that could go to the project is the recognition that the scope of work in the bid documents is not being done. Correct.
So go back to the map. I'm, I'm still really concerned, and again, I am not an engineer. Reason we have you. I'm just really concerned about just knowing what's there, that, that is the direction that we're going. Just, so that's just a concern that doesn't hold me back from saying, now go to the next slide or two slides when you talk about money. I think it will do us, I think this is the way we've got to do it, because we can be using that grant money or that loan money and not giving it back, because we really, because you did well, or we did well, that we had some contingency there that we didn't use, and we might as well use it as to give it back since we've already gotten the loan. We don't have to go through anymore, anything else to get it, and that, that's there. So, but I'm really concerned about the, the way.
So Adam, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Question? With 360, 361,812 budget, that uses all of the contingency. And so there's, there's no contingency built into this in the event there were any, any other unknown.
Correct.
Issues that would occur during the construction.
That, that is correct. Yes. That, it, it exhausts, you know, in order to make the math work, it exhausts all of the project loan funds, and you would have to go into city funds to, to close the gap. And if we wanted to put a contingency on it, it would be city funds that would.
It's really more than, than $40,000 in city funds if we want to make sure we've got enough contingency.
That would be correct. Yes. I think Ms. Hall, you, you make a very, very valid point. What I would welcome the opportunity to do after this meeting is debrief with our team again. We'll come back out and look at it some more, make sure that, with the highest level of certainty that we can, that we tell you we're doing something that is feasible and correct. Yes.
Should there be any coordinating with DOT on this because?
Let's, let's hold off just a minute. I got Britt looking for something, and we might not get there tonight. But, yeah, we do need to talk about that at some point.
Because we're not making a decision tonight, we're just sort of just listening.
Yes. Mayor, that's really all we had. Happy to answer any questions. On this specific topic, we'll continue to debrief with your staff, and you will offer whatever direction you believe is appropriate, and we can package the documents as necessary to come back to you for consideration.
Mayor, I do have one comment on your very first presentation. Okay, don't have to go to it now, but you were wondering if the date or the year on that first one was right. You don't have to do it now, but I just think for, you know, for minutes sake and that kind of thing, we need that, that date might need to be clarified. August 24, August 25?
It is, it is July of 2024, so my chart is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else got a question for Adam? Adam, I got a request for you.
Yes, sir.
Will you put together a written proposal or comments about where we stand on the other three projects that we're looking at, the ones we talked about tonight? Raw Water, 52 Water Plant, and that new water line? Where we stand on those, where they stand in your process, how long down the road, how we're going to get this 17-3 used for that? And is that got to be spent by the end of '26? How are we going to work all this out and move forward? Because I do not want to lose that 17-3.
So I'll say, I'll be, I'll be happy to work with your team and offer our feedback on that, but I can answer the last part of the question. No, it does not. The 17 million that you received in the fiscal year 2023, excuse me, 2023 state budget is not ARPA dollars.
Has it got to be pulled, have we got to pull that down? Have some kind of plan to pull that down before then? Put all that in writing for me and get it to Mr. Clark, please. So we can have an idea of what we're all.
I, I was just going to mention with the 17-3, I welcome Adam's support in helping us put that together. We have the request for funding documents for that 17.3 for the 52 raw water line and the 52 transmission line. We are working on building the RFQ documents for both of those projects in a, hopefully a design build format that should come out later this month. So we, we haven't selected a firm for that project, those first two projects as, as of this point.
So if you can put all that together, that's fine, but we need it in writing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, anything else for me? That was a mouth.
You have anything further?
I wanted that to go quick.
We always spend more money when you come.
Out of this question, not that question.
Anything else to come before counsel? Hearing none, I'll entertain.
Mayor, I think we had a gentleman that thought the meeting started at seven, started at seven o'clock. And I assumed that you had something that you wanted to say before counsel, if it's, if it's all right.
Come up, sir. Give me your name, address, so we can get you on as an announced delegation.
Chicago 1503 Sunset Avenue here in Albemarle, Oklahoma.
Get closer to the mic, Mr. Google.
Oh, did you hear me? Y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and women. I was told to go through a chain on this here, but after getting some mail today, I figured I needed to try to bring this, this to y'all's attention or to someone's attention because I, I might not be in the same predicament of trying to wait any longer. And before I start off, I'm going to say that's Natalie. Natalie, she's been with me for two years. She's, she's a, she's a adoptee. That's my granddaughter, Micaiah. I had her ever since she was three months old. And that's Ivan. I just got him like within three months, and he's Natalie's sister, and they come from AB USC. So when I got Natalie, I didn't want to, and, and they were going to send him because he, he is a therapeutic. And they were going to send him off here and there, and I didn't want them separated because you didn't know what they were going to be. So with that being said, I have been on Section 8 for a few years now, and mind you, I am disabled. But with everything, it's all been going smoothly. Ms. Diane, I can't think her name, the lady that was over housing that Section 8 at the time previously. When she was there, as I was getting Ivan, they told me he couldn't be in the room with the girl, so we had to move up to a three-bedroom. And I was on a two-bedroom paying $183 a month, and I was there like five years. And so they told me I had to move to a three-bedroom. And I, I did that, and it was on Sunset Avenue where I'm now. So when she was here, that's when the computers was down. And being the computers down, she couldn't calculate me in or do what they had to do. So she said what she was going to do is let me pay, she was going to do the 900, and I paid the $300 a month because the rent was 12. I said, okay, that would, that would be good. That went good for 10 months. These last two months, I don't know what happened to my calculations or this or that. And mind you, I just make right at $1,000 a month. My rent these last two months I paid was $597, which I say I got those three there too. So it made things hard, but I had to do it for them. I got to keep them somewhere. I was talking to my landlord about that. He was saying, well, he would adjust my rent so that, you know, they wouldn't be out and we have somewhere to stay. Now lately, that's been, been a problem. I've been trying to go and see what would my voucher be worth? And all I get is probably a thousand, probably a hundred dollars. I don't know what it is, but you might have to move, you might have to do this. And, okay, well, what's my voucher? She put in, well, keep kicking it out. But she wanted to send me over there on Avery Avenue, and it was, it's still somebody was staying in the house. And then the new houses into houses they built on. And then the new houses into a house that they built on Avery, right by Heathfield, they was $1,250. So it's still over what she say I can pay. And that's what she said. She said I don't make enough money, which I thought HUD was for the local income. But... So I got a letter today in the mail which stated... And I see I got it today. And it says it's addressed to me. It said, this letter is to inform you that you have 30 days to transfer units as it has been identified that the current unit you reside in is not within your payment standards. And the rent burden exceeds HUD regulation. You are to be vacated by September 30, 2024. And it goes on, if I want to do a hearing, but I don't know how much time I had to do a hearing. And then I still have to put them somewhere, you know, because they are in school. And they're still really up on the... You get the best kind of form with doctrine form, although the judge have legally, you know, have awarded them. So I had to take them papers up there from the judge to show them all this was going on. But my problem is, my landlord came to me yesterday. He asked me to go find out what my voucher was going to be. I said, no, I don't know what voucher is. But he said she already have people's call, a person, a lady. He told me this young lady called him to go ahead and saying that his house is going to be available, the house that mommy in. The girl, he says, this young lady with three kids. I'm a young man with three kids. And I can't figure out where I'm standing on this Section 8 thing because she won't give me a voucher number. And she won't give me a voucher number.
You got that today, correct?
Yes, I got this letter today in the mail.
Go over there tomorrow and see her and see exactly what she's got to have from you. You got to take all your documentation to her. If she doesn't have it, and give it to her. And then she needs to figure out what you're available to get. By HUD rules, you get 110% of market rate. Now, if a house doesn't qualify for that, then yes, she's right. You cannot stay in that house. So you got to go to her and talk to her about what the standards are and the requirements of HUD that you have to meet. And she should be able to tell you that and help you through this and then tell you what the rent is or the total amount that you can pay in rent. Not only their part, your part too cannot exceed the HUD standard.
And I asked her that, and she said that I don't suppose to be able to... It's illegal for me to pay my portion.
It is illegal. You can only pay... It has to be what the market rate is. And you can't pay an extra amount. That's not legal. You can only pay what you're allowed to pay by HUD rules. So HUD controls that, not the city. She has to go by what the HUD rules are. So go see her tomorrow and see if she can help you figure that out.
Is that even if my landlord is agreeing to bring his rent down for me to be in there? He's doing that for me and the kids.
That's the landlord. That's not us.
Yeah, I'm saying, but...
We don't tell landlord what he can do, but you...
No, 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 no. I'm saying, we already talked about that. I'm just saying...
Go talk to her tomorrow and see what she can do.
That's all I need to know. I can't find no house without an amount.
Well, have you gave it... Give her all the information she needs.
Award it to us. So I don't know what's...
Go there tomorrow, and if she cannot work with you, then come back up to administration.
Okay.
Say that again. Say that again.
That's what my revenue is.
We can't change it. This board cannot change that. That's HUD rules. So go back and see her. And then if you can't get an answer, come back to administration and let us see where we can find out where it's at.
Yeah, that's all I want. If she can tell me what my voucher is for, then I can go look for a house. I can't go look for no house and not doing what my voucher is for.
She can't tell you what the voucher is for if she can tell you what the maximum rent is. Go back and see her tomorrow and see what she can do. You got that letter today.
Yeah, I got it today. And I got to be out by September 30th with these three kids. I don't know how this is going to happen.
Yeah, no, I just have a comment that may help him. Because I don't like putting the... I don't like this. I mean, it has to go back and forth. I would like for Todd to be able to figure out who this is, his name and that kind of thing, or the clerk, so that we can put them on notice over there so that he will have somebody to call if it doesn't work. Because I just think that when you say administration, we only know who's administration. So I think if we give him a specific person, I just... And I think we're going to see more and more and more of this. And so I think we've got to have a policy that we can make it work.
Ms. Hall, I just signaled to Darren to get their information, and we'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay. I thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. Darren's right behind you there in the support group.
Thank you. I just... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Goode. All right, I had nobody else speak up, so I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session. Yes, sir.
Last Saturday, I had a birthday. A brother...
Happy birthday.
I'm not a young man anymore. I had a delegation come see me and said they wanted... They knew about my stand on golf carts in the city. And they wanted to do something to honor me for the stand I took on golf carts. So they presented me with a brand-new golf cart. And I wanted everyone to see that and recognize that that was my birthday.
It don't qualify for me.
Yeah, the chief's going to have to give it a permit. You got to pay the fee.[1711.81]